So, we called the meeting to order at 7:01. And looking for public input and seeing how there is none. We will go to our student report with Gabrielle Lazzaro.
The North Reading High School Student Council has been collecting Christmas cards to send to the troops. The American Red Cross Club sponsored a sock drive for homeless veterans during the month of November. And parent-teacher conferences were held on Monday, November 23rd. Tickets for the musical A Christmas Story went on sale Monday, November 16th. The dates for the play are December 4th, 5th, 11th, and 12th. The opening night, which is on Friday, December 4th, the cast from the original movie A Christmas Story will be present at the show. Carly Schwartz and Julia Tatum were selected as cross-country Eagle Tribune Honorable Mention All-Stars. The football team lost to Linfield 28 to 10 on Thanksgiving Day. Tryouts for winter sports began today. We had a very successful fall season and we're hoping for just a successful winter. We had a very successful spirit week and pep rally last week. And at pep rally, we held Olympic Games in which one representative from each class participated in a series of events and the seniors ended up winning. The seniors also won the Powderpuff Game 14 to 6 on Tuesday, November 24th. And for my student work report, I don't really have a work. It's a certificate I got from the bocce tournament that we held on Friday. So, just some background on that. So, the North Reading High School Student Council attended a statewide tournament at Westboro High School, a statewide bocce tournament, and over 15 schools in Massachusetts competed. And the teams consisted of students from the high school and also students from their special education classes at their school. So, we brought back this idea to North Reading High School and we held a mini tournament for the students in our school. There is a total of six teams and the teams consisted of two students from the special education classes and two other students. And we've been practicing for weeks prior to this tournament and my team ended up winning.
All right.
And after the games, we had a nice pizza party and then an award ceremony, which everyone received a certificate. And next year, we've been meeting with Special Olympics in Massachusetts and the Student Council is trying to host the state tournament next year at North Reading High School.
Nice.
Where would they have that? In the gym, do you know? And do they set up like the courts and stuff?
Yeah, we have, they have bumpers, so the balls don't go.
Right.
Do they have padding or do they use a rubber ball?
Yeah, they're rubber balls, they're not hard.
Because bocce, I know, usually is played on the sand.
Right.
Yeah. Very nice. Just a question on the ticket sales for The Christmas Story.
I heard they're going very well.
Very good. All right, yeah, because I still need to get mine.
Okay, just, and again, if we can get this out there, I was just talking to Massey down at the box office. Ticket sales aren't going very well, but there's a lot of seats available, particularly Friday night, the 11th. There are a lot of seats available. And there's seats available for each of the performances, so, both weekends. So, if you haven't got your tickets, I think you can come down to the box office on a Monday night or you can go online and get them.
That's correct.
And now, is she there every Monday night?
I think she's there every Monday night, yeah.
Monday night, and there is, as you say, online ticketing. I've sent a few email blasts out about the online purchases.
What are they doing, four performances?
Four performances, yeah. So, to get the word out, the matinee is, the sales are going real well.
The 12th, right, is the matinee?
12th is the matinee, 4 o'clock on Saturday, but there are, there are plenty of tickets available.
Very good. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby.
Okay, next, Superintendent Bernard, would you like to give the update on the SSBC?
I would, Madam Chair. Not an awful lot new to report, given, I think, the short week last week and also because I had prepared the pack at midweek last week as opposed to on Friday, some of this is a little bit outdated, in a good way, I suppose. Work continues to address the punch list items at both the middle school and the high school. There was a lot of, there were a lot of hands on deck today, as a matter of fact. I saw several people here working to address some of the punch list items that have been identified. I also, just as an aside, it's not in the report, but I did also have a meeting with Gil Bain today and gave them a list of items that I've been keeping track of, just kind of some things I see as I walk the building. And so, they, you know, they took that from me and they're starting to address, you know, I feel confident they'll start to address those as well. But I'm just, you know, want the committee to be aware that we are continuing to look at things that maybe the contractors are not seeing, the things that we experience here, living and working in the building on a daily basis. The installation of the decorative stone plaza at the lands, in the landscaping areas out front is complete now. I think they did a nice job, it looks good. There was some weed protection placed under the stone, so my hope is that that will be a kind of a low maintenance area to some degree. Work continues to cotton fill areas associated with the multipurpose and the softball fields at the site of the old high school, the Palmer High School. The installation of lightbulb, light pole bases at the lower parking lot area has continued to, to go on since about a week and a half ago. And they're continuing to work to remove unsuitable materials from that site. I do think that there is a sense that that work has slowed a bit and I think that they had hoped to be further along by the end of the calendar year. I'm not so sure that they will meet that target, but I think it's one of those things we're gonna have to stay tuned to.
All right. Very good. You guys have walked the site, too.
Again, I think, I think trying to get, get things done by the end of the year is gonna be dependent on the weather, to be honest with you. But they are making progress, it looks like, over the last few days that they've made a little bit of progress, it's starting to take shape a little bit better. But at the construction meeting, they said they should just keep moving forward as long as they can as far as weather's concerned. They did find some ledge out on what would be considered the center field part of the softball field. But they are going to try to break it up without going through a great expense to see if they can break it up with a machine and move it out of there and then raise the level a little bit of the, of the playing surface so that we don't have to get involved in an expensive blasting operation over there. Hopefully that holds true.
Eighteen inches, was it, a total?
Yeah, I think it was about eighteen inches. And it's just in certain areas out in the outfield there, so.
Mr. Bell?
I don't have anything further to add.
Mr. Webster?
I tend to be a little bit skeptical about completion of the binder coat on the parking areas by the end of the year. I think they're gonna run out of asphalt production before then. But I think the asphalt companies generally stay in production as long as the weather's good.
Right, the weather's warm.
But, I mean, we're playing on borrowed time right now.
This week looks good weather-wise, but that could change quickly.
Yeah. But I agree with Cliff, I'm a little pessimist.
I haven't seen any curb down there for those areas.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get that, but I don't think the parking matters that much in the winter. My, one of my big concerns is if we lose the spring planting season for the softball field and the practice field, that'll really set us back. I mean, we've had, we've struggled for three years now without a practice field. And I'm just concerned that they're not gonna get everything in, that they need to get in to just come in and put the loam down in the spring and then plant. And that, that'll be a setback.
Yeah, I mean, the original plan was to have everything ready except possibly just spreading the loam and seeding in the spring. The problem you have is if they still have work to do as far as grading and putting in, you know, curbs and stuff like that, if they have to do that in the spring, they have to wait until it's dry enough to do it. And what happens is you might lose the planting season until the fall. So, like I said, hopefully they'll get a lot done between now and the end of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Venazio, would you like to take the naming of the school facility?
Yes, again, this is regarding the Charles Jones, honoring Charles Jones, a former administrator and teacher at the middle school. So, at this time, I don't know, I'm gonna make a motion and maybe we'll have discussion after that. But Madam Chair, I'd like to move to name the middle school corridor from extending from Main Street to the district administrative offices in honor of Charles Jones, former teacher and administrator at the North Reading Middle School, and to submit a warrant article to the Board of Selectmen for placement on the June town meeting warrant.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion?
I'd just like to ask, Ms. Venazio, so you've been talking with the group that spearheaded this move. I don't know what they want to spend. I was hoping that if they did, we could maybe get two, two plaques. They don't have to be the same, one could be small and the other, but one at the entrance, near the entrance to the middle school, the main entrance, and one at the off Main Street, right where the hallway ends there.
And Mel had suggested, and I think what I'll try to do is get Mark Favreau in here to take a look at the barricitness plaque that we have down by the gym.
Right.
And see if they're interested in doing something like that, because it's a nice, nice plaque.
Well, could they do something that was kind of like at the entrance of the middle school, you know, dedicated to Charles E. Jones, but then the one that's on Main Street would be the more descriptive?
That would make sense to me.
Yeah, it does. And I think we can work those details out. I don't think it has to be part of the motion.
Right.
I think that's something we can work out as long as it's approved by the school committee and by town meeting, so.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. That's awesome. What a wonderful tribute to him.
It is, it is. I think, I think it's a nice thing to do and he'll join a lot of other former administrators and teachers who have been honored by naming rights throughout the entire facility. I think the superintendent's gonna be talking about that later on.
I was just gonna make a suggestion, actually, Madam Chair, that we move that, since we're talking about naming things now, does that make sense to move that item up to this spot in the agenda?
You would like it.
Since it segues right into it.
I'm happy to. Thank you. So, in my administrative report to you tonight, I had, I had put down some thoughts on, I think, you know, following through on our, on our commitment and doing the right thing to take the spaces that had been named in honor of people at the old high school, the Palmer High School, and renaming similar areas of the new high school. So, again, these are just thoughts. I think at the last meeting, it had been, I had been asked if I would put together some thoughts. And I did, I did meet with Mr. Venazio and just picked his brain a little bit and kind of took a tour of the, of the school and ran some ideas by, by Jerry for me to share with you tonight. So, to recap, I think first, the Daniel A. Shea, the Performing Arts Center, the picture had been installed in September, I think, you know, early in the month, shortly after the opening of school, in the picture, I think, of Mr. Shea, which we had recently had a new frame put on and there's a plaque noting his service to the community as well. So, that's been installed. And as well, more recently, on November 21st, the plaque that had been in the former high school honoring Barry Kipnis is a longtime teacher and particularly a basketball coach, varsity basketball coach, that plaque was installed near the gymnasium entrance of the school and with, kind of where the doors to the gym come together. I think it looks, I think it looks nice. It's a beautiful plaque. And I think tells a nice story about the man and I think is a suitable honor for him. I do have a thought on, on the Francis O'Donohue Library. Frank O'Donohue, as you all know, was a, was a longtime superintendent of the district. The plaque that was at the old high school is a very heavy plaque. It's made out of a very heavy brass. Jerry can attest to it, he lifted it and it's probably about 50 pounds, wouldn't you say, Jerry? It's a heavy plaque. If we were to place it in what I think would be a suitable place of the new library, the new media center, the wall would not support it. It's not a block wall, it's more of a, you know, kind of a sheet rock type wall.
Nothing to do with the construction, it's just.
No, no, right, exactly. The Barry Kipnis plaque.
But I don't wanna find out.
Take the whole building down, put in a 50-pound plaque.
No, no, thank you for being clear on that. The Barry Kipnis plaque is into the block, the brick block, so to speak. There's not an area like that near the new library. So, my, my thought would be, and I did get some, some design and some pricing with the help of one of our employees, Mike Perro, one of our facilities people, that we could have something made that looks very nice, but it would be a lighter material. It's not quite an aluminum, it's a little heavier than an aluminum, but it has a, we could get it with kind of a nickel finish with a dark green, kind of the school color green background. And I think it would be nice, I think it would look really nice. And my, my proposal to you is that we move forward with redoing that plaque. And what I would also like to do, because again, it doesn't, the old sign reads Frank, Francis X. O'Donohue Library. There are a lot of people, I don't think, who know who Frank O'Donohue was. And so, my proposal would be to include on the plaque the years that he was the superintendent of schools, which I think was 1970 to 1994.
It was 24 years.
Yeah. So, I thought, his name, and I would also, I would further propose that we add media center, or replace library with media center to be consistent with the language. So, the Francis X. O'Donohue Media Center, Superintendent of Schools, 1970 to 1994, or something of that.
That's good.
You know, kind of like a 24 by 20-inch plaque, I think would look really nice. The Harold Wise Music Center, so that had been, again, this was a heavier, kind of a, I'm not sure I'm using the right, but it's kind of a brass-type plaque, similar to the Barry Kipnis plaque. But there is an area down in the music center of the new middle high school that I think where, where kind of the music rooms, the stage, the band room, all kind of come together. There's a spot on the wall, a block wall, that I think would be a nice, a nice spot for the plaque. I did, I did reach out to Agatha Morado, I spoke with her on the phone last Wednesday. She appreciated the call and she had worked with Harold Wise for, for quite a few years, knew him very well, and I proposed to her the line, this line of thinking, and she thought, she thought that was a good idea. So, my proposal to you is that we can, we can use that plaque again because it's a block wall. It can be, if we can use the same plaque that had been installed at the, at the former high school. And very similar is, is the Ralph Hudson Science Wing, same style plaque. My proposal is on, on this level, actually right out here, opposite the two science labs, on this, on this floor of the high school, is a nice spot on the block wall where that, that plaque could be installed.
Good idea.
And then the last one, I believe, is, is the court, what had been named after Bill Butler, a longtime principal of the high school, there was the courtyard at the old high school that had been, had been named with a nice plaque honoring Mr. Butler, Dr. Butler. And there's a nice spot out on the plaza area going out the gym entrance that if you were going out this way, if you turned left and headed toward the courtyard that kind of frames the middle school, almost on the other side of the art room, I think on the front wall leading to that courtyard area, it would be very visible from the plaza area, from that concrete pavilion. And after we looked at it that day, Jerry, that night, I noticed that there's actually a wall scotch light.
Light, yeah.
That would shine right where we were, it would actually, I think, be a nice feature, too.
You can look at it when you go out.
Yeah. I think it would look, I think it would look really nice. It's a very nice plaque as a tribute to, to Dr. Butler, and I think that might be a nice spot to, to dedicate in his, in his honor and in his memory. So, with the exception of the, of the Frank O'Donohue plaque, which would need to, you know, probably is gonna take a little bit of time to have made, because it is kind of a custom order, I think it's fair to say that if the committee agrees, I could ask, I'm likely gonna ask Mike Perro, again, one of our facilities people, to, to work with me on the placement and installation of the Harold Wise, Ralph Hudson, and the Bill Butler plaques, if the committee.
Just so everybody knows, this isn't anything new. These are carried over from the old high school. We're not proposing or presenting any new dedications here. I think we made somewhat of a commitment, formally or informally, I'm not sure which it was, when we built the new school, that we would carry these, these things over into the new schools.
I think we did.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's a good thing to do. I mean, we already have Coach Carey's shirt.
Coach Carey shirt, yeah.
On the phys ed section of the Main Street with his shirt being in a prominent place, so I think.
We will have the Ellie Dell.
The Ellie Dell.
Oh, if you don't mind, too, just one other thing on that, maybe just to give you a little update and also for the public. I have been in touch with the attorney that has represented Mrs. Dell's estate, and I've sent him a picture of the Barry Kipnis plaque, and they like that look. And it was, they actually wrote to me that that's something that they envisioned, too. Again, I think that's probably one that's gonna take a little bit of time, because they're, they're looking to tell a story about who, who she was, who Ellie Dell was. And, you know, we can talk maybe about the placement of that, but I think there's a spot on Main Street.
By the ad.
Yeah, underneath the television, that, again, it's the brick wall, it would actually be the exterior of the old middle school wall, that's now the interior of Main Street.
Now, that wall, we do have to be careful with, that might.
Yeah. It's holding the TV, so that's a good size, but it also would lead into the ad. But we, you know, we can, you can certainly weigh in on that when you want. I would think that it probably makes sense to do a little, you know, unveiling of that plaque when it's finally installed and do a nice.
With the family and everything, that would be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Real nice, so.
I think along the same line that we had talked earlier about these plaques being people from the past, that many people don't recognize the name even, it would be nice if we could find a way to put something along with that plaque or near that plaque that would tell a little bit of the story behind that person and what they did.
I think we can, I think we have contacts with enough, I'm not, the only one I would have to, and I'm sure we could do it, it's just I don't know off the top of my head is, is how we might be able to reach somebody above Frank O'Donohue. So, maybe Ann Lindell.
Well, I think one of the people is Colleen.
Colleen Dolan?
Colleen Dolan.
Okay. Should I have the school committee with him?
O'Donohue absolutely, a nice history about.
Yeah, so I might be able to do a little something alongside of it or something like that, okay. And Ralph Hudson, his granddaughter actually taught at the high school, Sarah Winnicu, became Sarah Butterworth, so I could reach out to her. I actually talked with her about this at one time. And I think maybe with Agatha, I could get a little bio of Harold Wise and certainly Connie Butler on Bill, so. I think that would be a nice idea, because I think it, you know, time goes by and people, not for any reason, they just don't know who the person is any longer, or some people don't, so. So, if you're all in agreement, I can move forward with trying to do the, the next step, so to speak.
I think it's.
Very good. Thank you.
Onto new business. Mr. Webster or Mr. Venazio, which would you like to take?
You wanna take the lead, Mel?
I'll let you take the lead.
Well, we've been going back and forth with the Athletic Subcommittee, trying to come up with a charge for the so-called turf field project that we wanted to put in place down in the area that they're working now, where the old practice field used to be. And I think we've come to a conclusion that that may not be possible, because the drainage that's now being installed in that area of the, of the field is not consistent or compatible to a turf field drainage. So, that we need, we have several issues now. We have the new practice field and softball field that are going in. We're not gonna be able to do an artificial turf field in those areas, so that we're gonna have to grow grass and we're probably gonna need irrigation. We're also looking at the possibility of putting in a turf field now in the location of the existing baseball field. So, I think the charge, Mel, would be to try to raise money for irrigation in the practice field and the softball field and to install a turf field in the baseball field area and, and to address our needs as far as bathroom facilities and potentially concession standards.
Right.
So, it's kind of a more broad charge, but that would be the charge, to investigate the possibility of doing those things, to determine how much it would cost, and then to try to raise the money to do it.
And I look at it, I mean, there's a couple ways to look at this. There, there's one, there's one item that is a 100% necessity, and that's the bathrooms at the turf field. The next item is trying to figure out if we can do some sort of irrigation on the new grass fields that they're building. You know, the farther concession is important, but not a necessity, and I'd say the turf field is not a necessity. However, if we could turf that entire baseball field complex, we'd still play baseball there, it would still be our baseball field, I mean, baseball field. Other than when baseball games are being played and practices at times, but even with practices, we would have access, especially in the fall, to two full practice fields, multipurpose fields on that baseball. We had Bill, what's Bill's last name, from?
Bill Seymour?
Bill Seymour was in, he was our contractor, our consultant, on the turf field down on Route 62. And he said that there is enough room there for two full-size, full-size multipurpose practice fields. We, we right now have a terrible situation and we don't, I mean, relatively terrible, I guess, put it into context, we don't have enough practice fields. And, you know, Dave Johnson, I think, has done a heck of a job, kind of scrambling around and trying, trying as hard as he can to get the football team as many practices on the turf field while also having soccer games and baseball, field hockey games and, you know, everything else. And the fall's a really tough period. So, I think, Jerry, you're right, the charge is to try to do all those things. The one thing that I'm, I'm concerned about, though, or wondering about is, if necessary, can we separate out some of these things? Because we're looking to raise private money to do all this.
I think what we could probably do is prioritize them. Once the committee's put together, we could prioritize it, make that a general charge and establish priorities. What do you think?
Sure, yeah, I do.
Because I think all of them need to be at least addressed.
Right.
You know, and investigated. And you're right, the bathrooms are something we're gonna have to deal with relatively shoveling time. The other thing is that if we're going to plant in the spring, the practice field and the softball field, we need irrigation.
You need something.
If we don't have irrigation, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna work, so. And I think the irrigation, we talked to Chuck Carucci from the Building Committee, and Chuck's also participates in the Athletic Subcommittee, and Chuck seemed to think we could probably do it for $25,000 or $30,000. We have the, the problem is that we may need a well in order to go forward with irrigation because of the availability of water. But we have the line coming up the road there, almost all the way up to where the fields are gonna be. It would just be a question of, if we use that, we'd have to either access, we might have to access town water, so.
Yeah, the issue there is the cost and, you know, irrigation, it's important in the spring because we need to get those fields grown in. Once fields are grown in, you don't use it that much in the spring. Usually you have some rain and, you know, in the summer, sometimes you use it just to keep the grass growing and looking and, and healthy. But the cost of the town water can be really, you know, according to our maintenance staff, Wayne Hardika said the cost is, is pretty expensive for using the town water. The issue with the well is, you don't know if there's gonna be water there. They could go down, who knows how far.
Well, there, there's a lot of water.
There's water, exactly, as we said, yeah.
It's like, you know, you start looking for it and we won't be able to find it. There'll be water all around it.
So, you know, I think ideally, we would have a well-fed irrigation system there. That would be the ideal system. We wouldn't be using town water and, you know, that would, that would, that would be, that would be the ideal situation. You know, the cost for all this, we were talking, it could be $2 million, a little more than $2 million. I think you're talking about 1.25 million for the turf project and then throw everything else on top and you probably get another three-quarters of a million dollars.
I think $2 million's a place to start.
With everything else.
Be part of the committee's charge would be to get an estimate or a determination of what the cost would be.
And if there's a resident out there that would like to step forward with a $2 million check, we would accept it right now? Anybody in the audience?
Front page, Dan.
Dan, you see anybody out there that might?
Maybe the transcript could contribute a half a million.
There you go. Just for a point of clarification, because, so you're, you're talking about looking for turfing the practice field?
No, the baseball field.
The, the practice field, Janine, because of the drainage that's currently being installed down there in the subsurface that's being installed.
It's a different kind of drainage system.
Because I thought you were, I thought you were talking just about the softball field, not?
No, the softball field and the practice.
We were initially talking about that area.
Okay.
Which would have been ideal if we had anticipated, if we had done this as part of the project.
Right.
Then we could have done it.
But here's the thing, we would have to go in and dig up everything they've done.
And it's.
And there are issues with that.
Right.
Because those things that, that they've done, that make it incompatible with a turf field are part of the.
Overall.
The water off of the hill.
Right, exactly. So, everything's connected.
Got you.
So we can't.
That's the first thing we asked Bill Seymour.
Right.
So you're looking to do the Frank Carey Field, is that?
Yes, Carey Park.
The one right across from the batch?
That would be the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, John's done some work and asked Barbara Stats, the town clerk, to give us some information on the formulation of a committee, and she's done a great job of outlining it for us. So just quickly, if it's okay, I'll just quickly go through this. But what she said is the charge of the committee should be specific to its purpose and should include all such possibilities a school committee may envision. So I think that's why we're including everything in here. The, they should also determine the number of full voting members, and obviously an odd number seems to, you know, be consistent with trying to break ties and votes. The length of the term, will there be any associate members, will all the members be voting members? You know, and, and of course, everybody that's a part of this committee would have to be sworn in. She suggests that, I, I get the impression, John, from reading this, that she's saying that there ought to be a term, because if there's no term, if you just give it to the length of the project, then people stop showing up.
Correct.
Drop out, and then you have to remove them and appoint other people and all that, so.
And she suggested, I think, a staggered term system, too.
Staggered terms for them, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's her recommendation. So I think that's, I don't know, John, if you want to add anything to that, but that's generally what we have to do. And the makeup of the committee at this time, I think we've talked about, Mel, correct me if I'm wrong, would include this, one or two school committee members, the superintendent of schools, high school principal, the athletic director, somebody from Parks and Recreation, probably some community members, and maybe some of the members from some of the youth organizations. And I would think somebody from the Board of Selectmen might be a good idea, too.
Good idea, yeah.
So I don't know if we want to.
I think if you have one school committee member, one Board of Selectmen member.
Yeah. What do you think, Mel?
Yeah, I would say that it ought to be at least that number.
Yeah. One question I have on this whole, I understand the regulations to, to establish committees, but we're not looking for any town money. This is, this is a private, we're looking to raise the money privately, so I guess I just, I'm wondering why we have to officially establish a committee to, with the town, to privately raise money.
Well, I think it's to do something on town land, and I think what Barbara's doing is trying to be consistent with the committee that was actually formulated to do the current turf field.
Do we know who headed up the committee for the football turf field?
I know, I know a lot of people that were on it. There was Ed Rocco, Tom Tower.
Youth soccer.
Would that be as much of information to go to to find out how they set up their committee?
No, I think, I think Barbara Stats said they were set up this way.
This way, yeah. She, she, she used that as an example to ambush this information.
But, and actually, they were actually, I think, looking for private money initially, but, you know, then when the school committee in Parks and Rec was able to figure out a way that we could get together and turn the land over to them.
And I think, oh, gosh, isn't that awful, Jack?
Jack Collins.
Jack Collins was on the Hillview Commission.
Jack Collins was on Hillview.
Right. Forged the link there, yeah.
And they, and Jack drove this.
Right, right.
And the Hillview Commission ended up bonding the entire cost of the whole turf field, grandstands, lights, track, everything, so. We don't have that luxury this time around, so we're starting from scratch, so.
Mr. Venazio, I think, if you don't, just if you look at the numbers and the people we were just talking about, I think it may make sense to establish the committee with 11 members, is that sound right?
Sounds good.
If that's, that's if you had two, two school committee members.
Yeah.
Superintendent, the high school principal, the athletic director, a couple from Parks and Rec, and then I think that would leave you maybe three community members and a member of the Board of Selectmen. That gets to 11? So I don't think you'd want any, I don't think you'd want to go any less than 11.
No, I don't think so either. And then the community members could include potentially representatives from the youth organizations.
Right, and represent, or anybody who has a, you know, has a passion about getting another, another turf field project in town and getting this stuff done.
They might have the passion, they have the money.
The money, right.
They get a couple of million dollars.
It's a euphemism.
Exactly.
We can make a chair of that group.
Jerry, you make them chair, if they get $2 million?
Yeah, yeah. We make them superintendent.
At a million, I was in.
You thought you were good after your, after your review last meeting, and now?
No, that's.
You're out.
Money talks, right?
So I think we're gonna need a motion to do this.
I'll make a motion to establish a turf field committee for the purposes of, or with, do we have to have the charge, you think, in it?
I think we probably should.
With a charge of raising funds to construct a turf field at the current Carey Park, bathroom facilities at the turf field, the current football turf field, public lavatories, irrigation for the grass fields, which is currently being constructed, the grass practice field and the softball field, and a new concession stand. So the charge would be for a turf field at Carey Park, concession stand and, and storage, public lavatories, and irrigation for the new grass field to be constructed at the former high school site.
Further move that a, a committee?
I think there ought to be a slight change in that turf field or fields.
Fields, right, turf field or fields, right.
And do, I think we should probably, do we include, I think we need to include the number of members.
11 members.
Yeah.
Three-year terms.
With terms staggered.
Oh, staggered.
One, two, and three?
Yeah, staggered terms, one, two, and three-year terms.
Okay.
Committee of 11?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Length, the lengths of terms to be determined?
Yes.
Of one, two, and three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, do we necessarily have to name the people that are gonna be on the committee, or is that something we can wait on, if I think?
I think we need to.
I did not get the impression from Barbara that you needed to name them tonight.
Okay.
It was the formation of the committee.
So we're on the committee. Now we've got to figure out the makeup of the membership of those 11.
And then those people, as you said, would have to be sworn in?
Right.
There's a.
They can stop me.
Correct.
All right, good.
Someone want a second?
Second?
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. I know that Ms. Koki and Superintendent Bernard have worked on this next one, so would either of you want to take the lead?
Sure, whichever you'd like. Mrs. Koki, you wanna?
No, I, I took a look at the draft over the weekend. I think it looks great. I think a lot of my suggestions are in here. The note at the bottom, the file size, you know, of having to print out all of those documents and give, you know, whether it's a portfolio or some sort of collection to a new member.
Were you looking for?
On the.
Right, on the bottom, oh, okay, all right, yep.
I think it would still be helpful to have those physical documents for people to review, so I don't know if we keep them in central administration or something like that.
I think, with the exception of the policy manual, it would be very easy to put together.
Okay.
A packet.
Okay.
The policy manual might be the only one I would suggest be online, because it's literally.
Sure.
Is, is the policy, is that online now?
It is.
Because we got the discs at one time.
It's online, it's on, it's on.
And it's updated?
It is. Actually, I would say, because there were, there were, the, the policy Subcommittee.
Right.
We'd met quite, I think we have a meeting next week, but we had met pretty ready, and there was an, Ann Lindell, my secretary, was actually making some updates just last week.
Okay.
Some of the non-discrimination statement policies had to be updated and such, so that is, I, I would, I would say to you that that is, you know, very up-to-date.
I do agree with Julie. If someone wants hard copies, it might be nice to have them.
Of all of the other documents?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I, and I think it's simple to put that together. The policy manual was the one I was most concerned about, just because of its size.
But I think this letter is great, because if anything, it makes a newly-elected member feel more comfortable coming in to the position that they see right away, I'm elected, oh, great, look at this, I got this within two days, and I, you know, here's everything I need. So it's, it's an opportunity to do some more research and background before meeting with people, and I, I thought this was excellent.
There's a lot of information contained there. I mean, if you look at the policy manual, if you look at the budget, and you look at the contracts.
Yeah.
It's gonna give you a lot just that alone.
Exactly.
Right after you finish the policy manual.
Yeah.
You'll finish your first term.
I was gonna say.
Or you'll hung yourself.
No, this is actually very, very good. I know, you know, the three gentlemen have been on the board for several years, but having, this is just my third year. Remembering when I first came in, it, it, you know, Superintendent Willis was very gracious and, and very accommodating, but it was a lot to take in.
And we really didn't want to tell you too much.
I know, because you didn't want to scare me off.
That's our goal, yeah, we, yeah.
Trying to keep you in the dark.
But this is really nice to have it all together. I mean, you know, she handed me kind of like a, a to-do list of who I needed to see and, and what I needed to do. So this is a little bit of a nicer format, and it's a little bit more compacted and finalized, so, good job for you guys for having done that.
Yeah, and I read through, I thought it was great.
It's one of your goals, too, for the years.
Yes.
Have you read all the stuff?
Have I read this?
Yeah. No, have you read all of the sources?
I'm still working on it.
You are, okay.
Jerry, I still haven't.
Easy for her to write it down and suggest this is what you do.
I have time.
I haven't got, Jerry, you haven't either, I'm sure. I'm on my 11th year, I haven't, 12th year, I haven't gotten through the whole policy manual yet, so.
I haven't read the minutes yet in 16 years.
You know, it's one thing I can tell you, I have read every bit of the policy manual.
You have, you've been on the policy subcommittee.
Yes.
You've been on the policy Subcommittee for 10 years.
You're a policy guru, Cliff.
Not 10 years, no, seven and a half.
That's good, it's very good.
And I think, excellent, Julie, I think you would agree, this, you know, this, this is a working document.
Mm-hmm.
If all of a sudden, this, a document that you think a new school committee, we could certainly amend the letter and.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, very good, great.
Um, I do believe this is something that we should vote on. If someone could give me a motion to accept. Motion to accept the draft on the orientation packet for new school committee members.
Second.
Very good. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Very good job. Okay. Now to the fun stuff, routine matters. We have no minutes, Mr. Conley, we have no budget update and no staffing, so to the generosity of the community, if I could have a motion to accept our first donation from the Little School PTO?
I will, oh, go ahead, go ahead, hold on a second. I'll move to accept with gratitude an original commissioned painting from Rob Sorette, a local artist, and the painting's valued at $400, and the donation comes from the Little School PTO.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you. And we have another donation from the Little School PTO?
Move to approve, I'm sorry, move to accept with gratitude the Little School PTO, contribution of $490 to support the costs associated with a grade four field trip to Lowell Mills. That field trip is in March of 2016.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Which of the two athletic people wants to get into this?
This is Mel's.
There you go.
Very generous donation from North Reading Youth Soccer, move to accept with gratitude, a donation of a new soccer goal, a replacement net and base for the North Reading High School soccer programs. The equipment is valued at $1,600.
Very good.
Second.
Thank you, Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five to zero. And. Last, but definitely not least.
Move to accept with gratitude, donation from the North Reading Touchdown Club and an anonymous donor in the amount of $4,095 for varsity football game jerseys, and again, extremely generous donation.
Second. Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Just, um, one question.
This community is incredible.
One question, Michael, will you, do you keep track of these and compile the total?
I do, yeah.
It'd be great if every three months we could get, again, because I think it's really good for us to give the community an idea of what's being donated.
Sure, absolutely.
To the kids in North Reading.
I think we did it at the end of the year last year, I can.
Right, but maybe even every half year.
Quarter or something like that.
Quarter or half year, just tell us what.
It's like $6,600.
Just tonight.
$6,600.
Absolutely. I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Webster and Mr. Venazio, would you like to update us with the Athletic Subcommittee if there's anything?
I'll take the lead on this one, Jerry.
Go ahead.
I'll give you a break. There was a lot of discussion, and I think we came to a good understanding of, of a new strengthened, moving-forward partnership between the school department and Parks and Rec in terms of maintenance of the facilities that the school uses and that the youth of North Reading use. Mainly the baseball field, the Carey Field, the Hood School Field, what other ones did we, oh, that, we also use Ipswich River Park.
Okay.
And the Little School Field. We had, the head of Parks and Rec was there, we had Wayne Hardaker there, Wayne Hardaker, Marty Tilton, Rita Mullin.
Coach Carey.
Coach Carey was there, we had a member of Wayne's staff there.
Mike Parrow.
Mike Parrow, and they, they seemed to have come up with a new plan that will meet the needs moving forward to make sure all of the fields stay in top condition. And I think that was, that was the main issue. We also spent a lot of time at that meeting and then a following meeting, talking about the, the turf field project and how we want to move forward with that. Good news is, and this is actually pretty cool, because of the, we had about three extra home football games this year. We were able to generate, thanks to the great coaching of Coach Wall and getting us into the playoffs.
And Thanksgiving.
And Thanksgiving, also, huge crowd.
Big crowd.
We were able to generate a lot of excess income this year from gate receipts, and we're able to, we're gonna be putting in, I don't know if it started yet, John, but in the fitness area where all the equipment is up above, there's a little bit of, there's like a loft up there, and we're gonna be putting in up there, we're gonna turf, we're gonna put turf on the whole floor, on the floor up there, and then we're gonna put in batting cages for softball and baseball, and we're also gonna be able to use that area for, you know, lacrosse practice, shooting, sock, I, I mean, it's a lot, it's gonna be, gonna be put to a good use, and it's an area that we didn't really expect to be able to use, but now we're gonna be able to use it. And we've had a generous offer from a, a community member, I believe, just gonna help install.
That's correct.
The entire system, which will be, it'll be a lot less expensive than it would have been if we had to hire someone to install it. But it, it really sounds like a great idea.
And Dave Johnson's saying it's also can serve as another physical education station as well.
Teaching station, right. Right.
Above beyond that.
So what, will they have, like, a heavy net draped?
Yeah. It's a ceiling, it's a, it's a, it's like a cage, but it's a net cage, a ceiling, it goes all the way across the ceiling and down, but the cool thing is having the turf on the floor rather than just the concrete floor.
On the floor, right. And that will absorb a lot of the.
Right, plus we can use it for other things, though, whereas with the, with the concrete, you can't really use it for anything. So, is that started, John?
So the purchase auto was cut, and the auto was placed, we're just awaiting the delivery, but I think the, I have no reason to think that that would not be ready for spring sports. I mean, that certainly is our goal, and I have no reason to think it won't be the case.
That's great.
I should say the combination of, you know, not only revenues from football, but the revenues are up also from fees, user fees, and that was a big.
Mike's been able to find us some money to do this.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, the user fee, the user fee increase has been pretty, pretty substantial in the fall. So, you know, hopefully we'll have, we'll get our basketball and hockey teams into the state tournaments.
Yeah, if we have a good, if we have a good winter sign-up, you know, that's.
Right, winter sign-up, too.
Numbers are coming in, so.
Right. So that, that's gonna go on, and I think it'll benefit pretty much all sports, because it's not just for.
It's baseball, softball.
Right, but I'm saying other sports we'll be able to use also.
Just to clarify, that's the location that's kind of set back from the fitness center?
If you go up the stairs in the fitness center.
Okay.
That area up there, yeah.
Which I always envisioned as space that we could use rather than just storage, and it's a lot to see, it's.
Right.
Yeah, I think we, we kind of fell into that, really. I mean, I think for a long time, as the building was being built, we thought it was not going to be as good of a space as it is for a, a teaching station.
I remember saying they should cut out windows so that you can watch the games.
Jerry and I have talked about that, too, yeah.
Wouldn't be nice, yeah.
Did we talk about anything else, Jerry? Was that, was the main topic?
And then, and then I think the, the third big thing you mentioned quickly was we, we talked a lot about what we, what the next steps were gonna be for a turf field project, and so that's kind of been covered, I think. But those were the three big items, I remember.
And of course, we talked about the great, this is one of the best, Gabrielle mentioned earlier, but one of the best fall sports seasons we've had in a long time. I think we're in sixth or seventh place in the Globe Division III athletic standings after the fall season. Almost every one of our teams was 500 or above, and we had many teams in the state playoffs, many successful records for, for our teams.
And the participation rate is incredible. It seems to be going up every year.
Very high.
Seems that the participation is.
We're getting over 300 student athletes each season, basically.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Venazio, could you update us with the NORCAM?
Yes, NORCAM met on November 19th. I was there, Bob Masary, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen was there, Kate, Mayor Appelli was there as well. And one of the main topics we talked about was the, the programming, or trying to improve the programming that NORCAM has, which would include potentially, or hopefully, programming from the high school. And in particular, from the gymnasium area. We had had discussions with NORCAM in the past about trying to install cameras or a camera in the gym so that we could broadcast events from the gym. I think they gave me the impression, I don't think there was a fall vote, but that they, maybe there was a vote, that they would reconsider their original vote to not do it at this point in time, and they made a commitment to bring their engineer to the gym. I think Mr. Bernard's gonna accompany them to go in and check the infrastructure in the gym to see if it's compatible with the camera equipment that they have. If it is, then I think the next step would be to see if we can work some kind of a deal with them.
Right.
But, so that, that's, that's a major, I think, step forward as far as them coming in with their people to look at the, the, the infrastructure in the gym. I don't know, John, if you want to add to that.
There's a meeting scheduled, it's somewhat tentative right now, but a number of people responded today that they were available for 10 o'clock on Friday. So I'm hoping that that's a.
And one of the topics that came up, and in defense of NORCAM, I mean, they, they were, they were right. Public broadcasting is volunteer, and if you don't have the volunteers, you can't do the broadcasting. So we need to try to work with them to get some of our students, I think, involved in the NORCAM programs that they offer, so that they, they can actually run the cameras. They don't have the staff or the personnel to come out and run multiple locations, so.
Well, it's interesting, you know, like, I know Masco has a pretty, they had students that came here and.
Did the game.
Broadcast a, a girls' basketball game last year.
They didn't do a very good job, but they did it.
Right, I mean, they had, and if we had that, if we have those, if that remote control camera is installed in the gym, and, you know, students are trained to use that camera.
Was that one camera they used, Mel, for that game?
They just, they had a handheld camera, yeah.
It was unbelievable. The panorama of the, the entire court, it's absolutely unbelievable how, how clear and how it shows the entire court with one camera.
Right.
Yeah.
We also have a very nice TV studio.
Right, exactly.
Not quite sure how we're using that at this point, but.
But I think we need to get some student involvement.
That's a very nice facility.
It absolutely is.
Actually, it's a first-class facility.
Yeah.
So anyway, it's a step forward, and we'll see, you know, again, they want to evaluate the, the gym as far as, and I'm glad they're doing it, because quite frankly, I think they'll give us a report on what was installed in there to make sure it was installed correctly, so.
I mean, I think the cameras in here have worked out great, and I still continue to urge other boards, if they're interested in meeting here and using this space to, you know, it's, it's the best meeting space in town.
Yeah.
And I think the cameras, having the four cameras here has really worked out well. It's a shame we can't get them in, in the auditorium. well. Uh, it's a shame we can't get them in, on the auditorium, um, at this point, but the cost is prohibitive. It's worth looking at a hundred thousand dollars to wire-
Yeah.
-the system, so, that won't be done initially, uh, for a while.
That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Mel, I'll give you the lead on the financial-
Yeah, I had to leave early, but-
You didn't.
I don't wanna raise any alarms, because a lot of times, a lot of years at this time, and the budget looks, um, difficult, but the budget really looks difficult for next year. Um, and, and as usual, they're being very conservative, uh, Selectman and the town administrator in projecting revenues, and the town finance director, and I don't blame them for doing that, because you don't wanna overshoot on your projections and then not meet the revenues, but, uh, we're looking at pretty small increases for next year, very small, one, one and a half percent. Um, so here's hoping that they find more money, um, that people keep, continue to buy new cars and pay more excise tax, and that the state figures out a way to, I mean, we know the state is a half a billion short every year on funding, uh, properly funding education. I don't expect a half billion dollars from the state this year, but it'd be good if they could get a start on making up that money that they should be paying to the cities and towns. So that was, that was my takeaway from, from the meeting.
Yeah, a little bit on that subject, suburban coalition is setting up their agenda. They had a meeting last week, um, that looked at, at what the, um, the coalition would work on for the next year, and what their focus would be, and the, um, foundation budget review group has finished their effort, and they've come up with, uh, projections of , so, something like half a billion dollars or a billion dollars needed. And the, uh, focus that the, uh, coalition is working on is to find ways to, uh, push the funding of that, so that it would be funded rather than just out there and recognized as a, as a shortfall. Uh, and so that, uh, that will be progressing as, as we go on into the spring. Not gonna probably help us for this budget season, but, uh, maybe for the following year it won't be further in the hole.
And the bottom line is, this, the state, um, the formula hasn't been changed in so long that we have a basically an artificially low number as to how much the state believes it costs to educate a child per year in public education, and that's the problem, it's, it's artificially low, it's significantly lower than it should be. So the state looks and says, "Oh, you, you have plenty of money, 'cause you're spending over that artificially low number." The number probably should be four, five thousand dollars per student more per year. So that's why they get that half-billion-dollar number that the state is, is behind in terms of funding education on an annual basis. It's troubling, um, because we see how much the community puts into our education system, we see how much our teachers put into the system, spending money out of their own pockets, there's probably not a teacher in this district that doesn't do that on a regular basis, and we see the fees that we charge, and none of those should be part of a public education system, but unfortunately they are. So, you know, hopefully, as we move along, the revenues will look better. Um, you know, the tax rate went down, but most, everybody's assessments went up, so that doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go down because the tax rate went down, but it is good that the tax rate went down at least, um, it's going in the right direction, and hopefully, I know, um, Selectman Prisco is, is moving forward with, uh, his Economic Development Committee, and, and there's some, a few minor glitches, I guess, in the, getting the final takeover of the Berry property and then getting that on the market. Uh, hopefully they can get that on the market, and that would be a nice windfall for the town.
Sure would.
If they, if they can do that. I don't think there was anything else really discussed, was there, I left, as I said?
No, there wasn't that much more discussed after that.
I think that was the main-
Yeah, no, we-
Yeah, I think I captured it. Topic.
It's early, it's early, in the process, next meeting is, is here.
We did discuss the Little School roof, but nothing more other than we're moving forward with the-
Right, with the-
With the project.
The replacement.
The MSBA, yeah.
Yeah.
And that was it.
Uh, we already talked about the secondary school building committee, so, I'm good with that. So the schedule for the subcommittee meetings are as followed. For the subcommittee, they have a, a meeting scheduled for December seventh at two thirty PM. The next SSBC meeting will be December eighth at five thirty PM here in the Distance Learning Lab. NORCAM is scheduled for December seventeenth at seven PM. The financial planning team is scheduled for December eighteenth at eight fifteen AM. Athletic Subcommittee, December twenty-second at twelve thirty, and then again, the SSBC, uh, will meet at December twenty-second at, uh, five thirty PM here in the Distance Learning Lab.
John, that finance plan team is in, is gonna be in your conference room, right?
That's correct, on December eighth.
Central admin conference room, okay.
Right. That's a change in location, right?
Right.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent Bernard, the administrative report?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So just, um, in addition to that which I've already spoken about, um, I, I shared with you as part of my administrative report tonight, it's an attachment, um, a letter, copy of a letter that, um, Dr. Daley and I had written and sent to, um, Senator Ta and Representative Jones regarding, um, the transgender protections bill, um, it's HB one five, one five seven seven. Patrick had, had actually gone and spoken at the State House, um, at a request of Jeff Perotti, who some of you know. Um, Jeff Perotti has done some really good work, from the Department of Education, has done some really good work in our district for quite some time now around, um, uh, working with, um, with families, working with students, um, who, um, around gender identity issues, gay, lesbian, transgender and such, and so at his request, and we, Patrick and I participated in a panel this summer with Jeff at a state superintendent's conference down the Cape. Um, he's a very good guy and has really been very helpful, so at his request, Patrick had gone in and testified, um, on the experience we've had here in North Reading, working with students, working with families. Um, some of you attended last year in the spring a workshop that Jeff facilitated with some high school students. It was a very powerful evening, it was a really, really good, I think, evening, and I think we just, we felt as though, um, we, we thought we should put our names as, as the two, um, lead administrators of the school district in support of a, of a bill that would extend some of the, um, some of the accommodations, uh, for students that they experience in school, uh, when they leave school, and so that's what I think the, the spirit of this letter, um, does. So I, I wanted you to, to have a copy of it. I did have an opportunity to speak personally with both Senator Ta and Representative Jones a week ago, yesterday, um, and they were both appreciative of us having sent the letter, and they wanna follow up with us and just learn a little bit more, and I think, you know, try to, I think, you know, our kids are our most powerful examples of, you know, why we wanna have a safe school environment for everybody, and I think this, that, so that was the spirit of the letter.